He was a nice guy. He was an art teacher, right? He was an art teacher. He was a white student. He did run in Benedict Grove because of Greece. Because Jeff was one of the kids and Matt. Matt was the other kid. Matt Rocky hung around with Bill. Bill's doing this. I just didn't know that. I knew they were.
Now, what's Bill doing? He's in Seattle.
I have no idea. I don't know him. I didn't. If you don't know people.
Of course, I'm not responsible for my car.
Half the time I've worked at a contact land. That's where I got solutions from. Hello. Look at the little A. It's his little anal. That's a word for a child.
Wow, congratulations.
He indoor. Is he a he?
A she.
A she.
Sadie.
Sadie. I like Sadie. The lady in the big white is named Sadie.
If they're both still fine.
Mm-hmm.
It could be interpreted that they aren't.
They were very smart, very pleasant.
Or it could be dependent on who's swinging the stick, right?
Gorgeous.
Isn't that so?
No, they're both four seventy, eleven thirty.
There you go. Look at that.
One thirty. I think. What do we do now?
No.
The other one does.
You're a grandpa.
Well, I'll do a little swat. I'm trying to fight it.
The good thing is, you know, at the end of the day, you go home. They scream, they cry, they leave.
Yeah, it says the same. I think we're fine because.
Where? Where did it live?
Easy.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure your wife can't do that.
By the way, I'm a little perplexed how I'm supposed to know that when I was having this. It's not one item. Yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous. Are we ready?
Ready.
We don't typically stand and recite the pledge for public hearing. So I'm going to call. Are you ready, Allison?
Yeah.
We're going to call the first public hearing to order at six thirty-four P.M. This public hearing is open for public input on the revisions to chapter four seventy entitled taxation. We have a presentation that Mr. Kellogg was kind enough to present. So we'll have Mr. Kellogg present the revisions and then we'll take input from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very. I will try to quickly go through this in the spirit of time. Certainly, you can go to questions after. First, I want to just acknowledge that this is a lot of work as a result of Ms. Lepelis's subcommittee of FEPs, which Ms. Kansky is also on. And we certainly put in a tremendous amount of time and we thank Ms. Lepelis for her leadership in this program. The background of this is we have a desire to review our existing program of tax relief for elderly and totally disabled. Our current ordinance actually states in the ordinance that the program should be reviewed every two years. Obviously, a desire to allow seniors and totally disabled individuals that have significant income limitations to remain in their homes and to proceed in a fiscally prudent fashion. The committee held numerous meetings since the beginning of the year. Again, a tremendous amount of research was done. We received input from the assessor, who, by the way, sentenced his regrets of not being present tonight. He did say we could call him on the cell if any questions arose, but he had a previous commitment. We also received input from the tax collector, the board of finance chair, who attended one of our meetings. The FEPs committee did a presentation and discussion and Q and A at the senior center, which was also attended by individuals for the Commission on Aging. We received input from the L.A. committee and then ultimately input from the town attorney. The scope of this ordinance change applies only to the Article One, elderly or totally disabled programs. There's no changes to any other programs such as veterans relief, et cetera. And it only applies to real estate taxes. And this would be effective the next fiscal year starting July of two thousand seventeen. It applies only to those with some exceptions, primarily to those over age sixty-five. There are some exceptions to that. You must be a minimum taxpayer for over a year and it must be your residence for at least one hundred eighty-three days per year. That's in the current ordinance. We also added in this revision that you must be current on other tax, any other taxes due to town in order to be eligible for the program. So I'm going to briefly go through four different programs. One is the state program. It's actually not covered in the ordinance, but for the purpose of perspective, this is a program that exists. There's no changes to it. The eligibility to relief are determined solely by the state of Connecticut. The town provides the credit upfront and then the state reimburses the town. This is the current state program. So as you can see, based on income ranges, married or unmarried, there's a credit that's provided based on a percentage and there's a minimum max. So for someone who earned, you know, a twenty-three thousand dollar income level, assuming they're married, they would be eligible for a minimum of three hundred and fifty dollars, up to a maximum of, well, basically up to forty percent of the taxes due, up to a maximum of a thousand dollars. And again, this is funds that can be ultimately received back from the state. Program two is the town tax credit. This is an additional credit and the relief and eligibility are determined by the ordinance within the enabling state statute parameters. This is a program that currently exists in our ordinance and currently there are about five hundred fifty-nine individuals on this program at a cost to the town of approximately three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And again, those numbers are probably as of, I don't know, maybe four months ago when we last got numbers from the assessor's office. The recommendation from the FEPs committee was to maintain the current income eligibility ranges in our program, which is up to sixty thousand dollars. We felt that the income ranges were in line. I know there was a question at our last council meeting about that. Area towns, just to give you some perspective, Shelton's cap is forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Bethel is forty-eight thousand. But we have towns like Trumbull and Newtown that are both seventy thousand and then towns like Fairfield, which are seventy-three five. So we felt we were kind of in a reasonably good kind of middle spot there. We also proposing increasing the credit percentage, and I'll go through the specifics on the next slide. But the total cost of those incremental credits estimated by the assessor is thirty-two thousand, just over thirty-two thousand dollars. The cap, which I'll go over, is another parameter which would increase costs. Our recommendation increases about two thousand seven hundred dollars. So these are relatively small amounts, but you look at the overall increase in the credit, it's almost a nine point four percent increase in the overall credit benefit that we're providing to those eligible. And we wanted to maintain somewhat conservative approach on this because, as you'll see later, our focus is on the deferral, is on revamping the deferral program. So in the current, in the town credit program currently, if you take that same twenty-three thousand dollar income household, currently, they would fall under this bracket here. They would be eligible for a thirteen percent credit up to a max of one thousand three hundred dollars. We are proposing that this bracket be increased two percentage points to allow them to be eligible for a fifteen percent credit and also increase the cap would be all up to one thousand five hundred dollars max. So basically, two percentage points and two hundred dollar increase on the cap. All of the other brackets are increased one percentage point and one hundred dollars each on the cap. The reason that we emphasize this bracket is that looking at the data with FEPs and the board of finance chair, we found that there was a large, it was skewed, those individuals on the program were skewed towards the lower end of the bracket. So we wanted to provide greater relief for those who were in the greatest amount of need. The third program is the town freeze program. That is a state program that was phased out in nineteen seventy-nine. The town program phases out under the current ordinance in two thousand seven and our recommendation was to allow this to continue to phase out. Most towns do not have that, only there's a small percentage of towns that maintain any kind of a freeze program. Focus on is on a deferral program. Whereas most communities have a credit program, actually a hundred percent of Fairfield County towns have a credit program. Many also have a deferral program. There are, I don't have numbers by county, but statewide, seventy, just about seventy-two percent of a credit program, about thirty-three percent have a deferral program. And our desire here was to provide options, provide another option and give seniors a choice. The deferrals can allow for a significantly more immediate tax relief. However, they are similar to a reverse mortgage in their concept. So they're not necessarily for everyone. It's got to be for someone who's willing to utilize the equity that's built in their home and treat it like a loan from the town because the town ultimately gets reimbursed in full, which again makes it very fiscally prudent. The current program, the ordinance that we're discussing tonight has deferral language in there and it is not a practical program. It requires the tax collector to begin foreclosure if the loan is not repaid in fifteen years. That means if someone started a deferral at age sixty-five and got approved, if they continue to live in their home sometime during their seventies, you know, their seventies, let's say, they would have to either pay back that loan in full or be facing the town foreclosing on the property that we've, that we gave a deferral so they could stay in it in the first place. So as one might imagine, when this program gets explained to them, there are, no one takes part in it. So there are currently zero participants in this program. So our recommendation is to overhaul this program. We want to utilize the same income parameters as the credit program. In other words, an income level of under sixty thousand. Have the ability to choose the additional town credit or the deferral, deferring up to seventy-five percent of taxes due as long as the total deferrals do not exceed seventy percent of the assessed value of the property. And since, as we know, assessments are at seventy percent of market value, that would mean the total deferral could not get to forty-nine percent. And that is specifically so that the town is protected in case, we don't want someone becoming upside down on the deferral loan. It obviously requires management of the short-term cash flow impacts because even though the town ultimately gets paid back, we have to front those funds. In discussions with the board of finance chair, he felt very confident of the town's ability to manage those short-term cash flow impacts. It would require an agreement with the tax collector and that agreement would come before, the standard form would come before council to be approved. The deferral amount would be subject to an interest rate. For the first fiscal year that this would apply, it would be set at three percent. It's recorded on the land record as a lien and requires the town to be paid back with interest once the property is sold, transferred, the death of the taxpayer, et cetera. We remove the foreclosure requirement under this program completely. But as you'll see later on, we maintain the town's rights, generally speaking. But that requirement of after fifteen years that the collector must foreclose would be removed. The goal again is another option with greater relief. We understand that not everyone wants to, you know, necessarily take out another loan, but for those folks that have built up that equity and it's something that they want to tap into, it provides another option. Other revisions made to the ordinance, clarification of qualified income in person. Basically qualified income meaning joint income, married, et cetera. It's, in person is, means just that. It's not going to be eligible to, you know, corporations or trusts and things like that. Again, must be current on all taxes owed to qualify. We clarified the application period to be February first to May fifteenth. The current ordinance is a little bit unclear on that. For the credit program, we maintain a biannual application. However, the deferral requires an annual application. We also add an exception to allow deeded life applicants. These are individuals who are not record owners. They're required to pay the property taxes. We would allow them to qualify. We also changed the, to streamline the processing so that all applications are processed by the assessor. Currently, the deferrals go directly to the tax collector, whereas only the credit processing goes to the assessor. So all the applications would now go to the assessor. The assessor would certainly process it and could determine whether or not, if applied, a deferral was appropriate and approved. And if so, it would be sent to the collector to actually implement that deferral and process it. The interest rate, a little bit more about that. It is set, the ordinance provides it will be accrued monthly and compounded annually. That's so that, you know, at the end of the term, when that is being paid back, we know exactly how much interest should be recorded. The three percent would start for the fiscal year starting July first of next year. And then future years, the opportunity to adjust that rate would apply with council after getting a board of finance recommendation. The board of finance would recommend in December, council would act by the end of January to set a new rate. And if for some reason there was a failure to act by that date, the old rate would stay for another year. As far as that agreement, as I said, the ordinance calls for a standard form of the agreement to be drafted and approved by town council. So I would envision the template, if you will, agreement coming before council so that we would basically approve the contract as is our, as is required by our charter. But then we would grant the tax collector the authority to enter into that contract, you know, as appropriate for those applicants that met the qualifications. That also preserves a certain amount of, you know, ability. In other words, we don't have to look at every, we wouldn't get every single contract that would come to us because we'd be the same form. And again, in that same section, we preserve all the legal remedies, including foreclosure to the tax collector. So if someone were to suddenly now stop paying their taxes, they'd be in significant arrears, the tax collector would still have all legal remedies available to them. And then liens would not be assigned without a resolution from both the board of finance and the town council. So these liens could not be assigned by the tax collector on his own authority. So to summarize, state program, no changes. Town credit, an increase in the total credit provided, represents nine point three percent, but still, I think, very prudent fiscally. The town freeze, no changes. And the town deferral, a complete overhaul to allow up to seventy-five percent deferred. To give you some, a summary, I wanted to get a kind of a real-life example of this. So this is, this is a real person. This is not a real household, I should say. This isn't just arbitrary numbers. This is data I took out of Mr. Lasky's spreadsheet that he provided to us. So we have a family who has a, or I should say a household, I don't know whether it's a couple or family, with a total income of just over fourteen thousand dollars. And however, they have, you know, a relatively nice piece of property, probably have a market value in the four hundred thousands. So they have a tax bill of almost nine thousand five hundred dollars a year. Under the current program, their only option that's available to them is this tax credit of thirteen percent, which is a little over twelve hundred dollars. The proposed changes would provide them with an option. If they wanted to maintain the credit, it would go up to fifteen percent in their income eligibility bracket. So it would provide them with additional credit of almost two hundred dollars more of credit. If, however, they wanted to go the deferral approach, as you can see, they would be able to defer up to seventy-five percent or over seven thousand dollars of that tax liability, which I think provides a much more meaningful relief for someone in that kind of a situation. And if that's, that's it, I think all, there's copies of the presentation floating around. If you want to do any quick questions as to the intent, if not, I do have one item for, I left copies on the dais and I believe I left a new copy as well. I received a communication back in October when we were going through the process of FEPs from attorney Michael Sowen, basically in support of this. So I wanted to just pass that along to council and enter that into the public record, public participation. I did contact Mr. Sowen and advise him that there was a public hearing in Trumbull, but didn't want this letter included in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. I know all the members of council are very familiar with these changes as we gave up consensus. However, as part of our charter, this hearing is required to receive input from the public. So if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, Mr. Kirsch, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Kirsch, thirty-five Applegate Lane. First point, this package that was on the, on the table here appears to be missing a couple of pages regarding the actual text of this revision. Couple of questions. On the tax deferral, what's the impact on a yearly basis? I mean, you talk about what the impact might be, you know, for the other ones. I'm not against it. I'm for these revisions. What I want is, A, clarity on that point, number one. And the other thing which I brought up to the board of finance is I believe that our budget document should show explicitly someplace as a note or something what the total cost to the town is each year. I know that it's subtracted from the grand list so that it's in the calculation. But I think the total cost of these programs needs to be reflected in the budget document itself. I know that's something the board of finance has said they want to do, but I wanted to have it on the record through the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Mr. Kellogg, do you have any knowledge of the rest of the annual bracket?
I recall having, we had a specific conversation with Mr. Manjos during one of the FEPs meetings. I was looking for my notes from that to, I don't, I'd have to fire up a laptop probably to get that. I know that certainly it's, it's obviously more than the credit program and that's the intent. I do also, you know, what, I understand the question and it's a good question. It also requires you to kind of predict the future, which is difficult to do. So it's very hypothetical. I think we utilized some numbers based on other communities such as Stratford that had deferral programs and looked at the percentage of eligible people and if it was the same percentage, what that would equate to. I recall numbers that, you know, at the most were a couple hundred thousand dollars, I believe. But again, I'd like to go back to my notes to be sure. But that's the number that's kind of in my head. And I, again, Mr. Manjos was not at all concerned at the time about the ability of the town to manage those kind of fluctuations over time. Again, knowing that ultimately the money does start to return back to the town. So again, that was kind of worst-case scenario if we look at everyone who's currently eligible, taking the entire tax, if they took the full seventy-five percent. Because again, people could apply and say, you know, I want to only defer fifty percent of my taxes, let's say.
But the reality, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the reality is nobody's taking it, right?
Right now, no.
Yeah.
That this particular program is not available as it's currently situated.
And the history is that they haven't taken it really, right?
Well, again, the current program is, I think even our tax collector would categorize it as impractical in its current form. So again, our hope is to create a program that is practical and meaningful and that we will have. I would hope people would take advantage of this because I think that, one, it's the right thing to do for seniors and totally disabled individuals who have lived in Monroe for time and we want to let them stay in their homes. And I also feel that, you know, it's not only a benefit to those individuals. I think, you know, it's a benefit to the town. I think we had discussed in a previous meeting that certainly every year that a senior stays in their home is another year that that home doesn't get turned over and most likely brought by someone who's going to enter, you know, a family with children entering the school system and probably increase a cost to the town, taken in its entirety, right? So I think the program is mutually beneficial to the participants and the town.
So you do anticipate there'll be some takers?
I would, I would absolutely anticipate there'd be some. And, you know, as we had discussed at one of the meetings, I'm not sure if it was when you were on, you know, Mr. Lasky was, you know, willing to work with the FEPs committee to make sure that we had a kind of an application process that was, kind of made sense. And I know that the senior center director was also willing to send out information and, you know, kind of publicize this, so to speak. And make, yeah, I mean, there are other towns that have nicely, like, I know Fairfield has a nice, like, one-page document that says you can do this or this and it's kind of laid out nice and clear. We could kind of model after something like that or another towns. I think it's getting the word out that would be beneficial.
Anything else?
Just a thought. I, I would anticipate that in this kind of a situation, privacy concerns would perhaps be an issue for some people. And the fact that, like, some of this has to come to the council for approval, is there, is there any?
No, in fact, and perhaps I wasn't clear, the way the ordinance is written is that the, the form of the agreement needs to come before council. So I would presume that should this, should this pass later tonight and be, and then subsequently get signed by the first electment, that we will work with Mr. Lasky, town attorney and, I'm sorry, L.A., yeah, L.A., to, and the tax collector to come up with a template agreement. So there'll be one standard agreement. It will not be subject to modification by anyone. That would be the agreement that the council will approve. And then literally, if someone, you know, is approved for the deferral, it's simply a matter of plugging in the specifics of, you know, who and names and how much. And it's basically a non-negotiable agreement at that point. So those specific agreements with names wouldn't come to us because we've already approved the agreement in concept.
Okay. Thank you.
It's also public record. I mean, the assessor's card would be selected.
Right, right. But it eliminates us having to get.
Any other members in the public who wish to comment on this? Any members of council wish to comment? All right, seeing none, we're running a little behind. We'll close this particular public hearing. Time is six fifty-seven P.M. We're twelve minutes into the next public hearing. So we'll call that public hearing to order for input from the public on the revisions to chapter two ninety-one entitled Food Handling Establishments. Again, council's been well apprised. Mr. Kellogg, if you would just give a very brief overview of this, these revisions, briefer than you intended.
Certainly. So this chapter formerly called Food Handling Establishments, it's renamed to Food Service Establishments to be consistent with the state public health codes. It's revised in its entirety. It grants the authority to the director of health to enforce the provisions of the chapter. And the chapter outlines the operations of food service establishments and provides for general provisions in regards to licensing and inspection as well as the technical standards required for the equipment and the facilities. It incorporates the state public health code where appropriate and basically adds to that those areas of the public health code where they are silent, such as local licensing, and provides us with that authority.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any members of council wish to comment before I open up to public?
Uh-uh.
All right. Ms. Kansky?
In, in years past, we've had health directors who have, you know, gone ahead and, and talked with people who were preparing food and actually, I don't know, what's the word I'm looking for, but told them that they cannot continue because they're violating some health code. And there were times that council got involved with that, which, one of the instances, I'll give an example, is up at Wolf Park when there was a vendor who was told to have two wash stations, I think it was. And the health department closed them down and there was people on this board that were objecting to that. So will this give the health director absolute authority to go ahead and close down an establishment or do what they have to do because there's a violation without council saying, why did she do it or he do it? And so on and so forth. Does it have the teeth in it to give her or him the right to enforce this ordinance?
Mr. Kellogg, you can comment.
Happy to, yeah, happy to respond.
Ms. Brawlt is also here for the record, so I'm sure she can comment as well as to how liable she believes this particular ordinance to be. Mr. Kellogg?
Let me first state that the changes to this, the revamp of this ordinance was vetted and approved by the board of health, of which Ms. Brawlt sits on, again, by the board of health, as well as being vetted, you know, approved by L.A. as well as the town attorney. I fully believe that this ordinance provides the appropriate authority to the director of health to enforce the public health code and the provisions of the ordinance. There are certainly areas where, I mean, it also substantively preserves the due process rights of an aggrieved business owner to appeal orders all the way up to the state if necessary, if they feel necessary. In fact, that's a requirement that they provide those, the language of how they could appeal an ordinance, I'm sorry, appeal an order. In fact, this ordinance provides very specific authority of the director to immediately terminate an operation that they deem an imminent threat to public health, of which those items are itemized as well. So I feel it absolutely gives authority to.
So I feel it absolutely gives authority to, to the director of health-
To do her job.
To do their, to do her job, and I would welcome any comments from Ms. Brought in that regard.
We did talk about this in detail and the board of health, and basically it does give the board of health, I mean, there's an imminent hazard, you know, it does give the health director the authority to go to the restaurant.
Good, good. Thank you.
And I certainly want to emphasize that while it does provide that authority, I think the board was very prudent in, in promulgating standards that are not unreasonable. You know, the intent is to protect the public health, but certainly not unnecessarily restricting businesses from, from, you know, being in business and doing what, you know, doing the things to do to have a viable business. So I think they struck the right balance.
Anybody else wish to participate? Any members of the public? Mr. Hostler, name and address for the record, please.
Lee Hospital, 272 Stanley Road. I'm not sure, Ms. Cansky, if I heard exactly what you said, but I would like, I'm going to bring something else up. Does this have any effect on total trucks?
Food trucks?
This is food trucks?
Mr. Kellogg?
So itinerant, itinerant vendors, is that, is how they're referred to in the state health code and how they're defined here, are included as one type of food handling establishment. Itinerant food vendors are currently allowed by the state health code and they are contemplated in here as well, and so yes, they are fully authorized and permitted under this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler. Would any other members of the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, any further comments from council? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 7:04 PM, and we have two more to go. Moving on, I will call to order and open the third public hearing this evening for public comment on the revisions to chapter 305 entitled Health and Sanitation. Mr. Kellogg, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a, maybe, this might be the smallest ordinance in our code. This basically is a small revision to basically continue to adopt the state public health code, but only in matters where the code of the town of Monroe is silent, and then in any matter where the code conflicts with the state statutes or regulations, being clear that the higher standard would prevail.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Fairly self-explanatory, any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing no comments from the public or council, we can effectively close this public hearing at 7:05 PM. Our next public hearing is not scheduled to start until 7:15 PM. It'd be appropriate to take just a brief recess, wait till 7:15, since that's the scheduled time, so as not to put anybody from comment, so we can be in at 7:15 for that last public hearing.